Everyone, this is the Selectment Meeting for January 9th at 6:00 PM.
Yep, it's working.
And I open the meeting. One sec. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we have a special moment. We have a minute of silence for the former US Presser and David Carter, who passed on December 29th, 2024, and veteran Lucille Witazek, oldest town resident at 103, who passed on December 31st of 2024. Thank you very much. We're gonna continue our meeting with the Police Chief's monthly report.
Good evening, Jerry Mallett, Chief of Police. For the month of December, the department logged 1,525 calls for service, investigated two felonies, had 40 incident reports, one on-view arrest, two Warren arrests, 17 summons arrests for a total of 20, zero protective custody's, two juvenile arrests, and 175 motor vehicle stops with 114 citations written. At the beginning of the month, I attended the school safety presentation at Quabog District for all the district employees. This presentation was put on by our Safety Chair Eric Urban. And just a quick shout, Mr. Urban does do a great job with his safety presentations. Adam and I were there. In case any questions arise, we were there to answer them. Also, on the topic of safety, on the 4th, Chief Lavoy and I met with Town Administrator Jim Ferrara, and we just talked, spoke a little bit about the safety here at the municipal office building that Chief Lavoy and I will in the coming months give some suggestions for. On the 9th, the department selected the year, this year's winner for the Department Holiday Contest. Every year, I conduct the contest with the 5th grade, and our teacher does a great job getting them all to give me a design. This year, we picked two. We went with the Grinch theme, and it was, just happened to be two students that both went the same theme, and it worked, worked well for our holiday card. On the 10th, I attended the Chief's Legal Updates. This class is required by the MPTC and post. The class was sponsored by the Central Mass Chiefs of Police Association and was instructed by our legal counsel. On the 12th, I attended a Christmas party at the Senior Center. Thank you to Sharon, she and her crew. They allowed me to pull all the winning tickets for the prizes. On the 20th, I spent the day with Superintendent Duff at all three schools in the district. Santa and the Grinch visited every classroom that day, and to the district to wish all the students happy holidays. On the 27th, I had the honor of presenting 9th grade Quabog student, in her family, a check for $5,000 from the organization Cops for Kids with Cancer. I sponsored this student for this award to help her and her family with her fight to battle cancer. I'd like to also thank retired Mass State Trooper and Warren resident Larry Quarter. He brought it to my attention, so I was able to sponsor her for that. And that's the month of December. Hope everyone had a happy holiday.
Thank you, Chief. I got your card. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Great, great job.
Good, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
So next, we are gonna acknowledge man of the resignation of Police Officer Brian Pfizer, effective on January 13, 2025?
Yeah, Officer Pfister is leaving us for another opportunity. He has some family that he wants, he needs to work day shift for, and he found an opportunity that he could work days. And he's gonna take it to benefit him and his family.
Good luck on his new journey.
Yep, he just found out they're having another baby, and it's gonna be a baby boy.
Oh, nice.
Congratulations to him.
Very good. Yeah, he told me about it one night, talking at midnight at this gas station. Anything else?
Sergeant's position.
So next, for our next, it's the review and possible vote on an updated position description for Police Sergeant, anticipated vote.
So this is the job description. During the process, we learned that we didn't have an adopted sergeant's job description. So I created one. I gave it to Mr. Ferrara to look it over and prove it, and after we were satisfied with it, we gave it to the union. That's what's been taking so long to get this ball rolling. And the union reviewed it, and they gave an approval letter to us. Now we're bringing it in front of the board for approval.
Okay, next, we have a discussion. Oh, do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. So could I have a motion for number three, please?
I'll make a motion to amend the, well, wait a second. No, that's P. It's number three, right?
Yes.
It's number three?
Yes.
I said number three.
You said number four, right?
No.
No, number three.
Oh, all right, I'm moving on to three, four then. But, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the updated position description for the Police Sergeant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved. Now we move into four. Discussion and possible vote to amend the Police Patrolman's collective bargaining agreement to reflect the already budgeted sergeant hourly wage, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your reference. The, when we were going through, you know, the process for filling the sergeant's position, we noticed that in the collective bargaining agreement, that it talks about the position of the sergeant, but there was an error in the writing of the, of the actual agreement. The error was that there was no provision in the appendix that signals the pay for the position of sergeant. And if you go back to the previous collective bargaining agreement that was done three years ago, it signals in the appendix that the sergeant's position is 8% is 8% higher than the, at 8% of the highest paid patrolman. Okay, and so I drafted an amendment for your consideration so that we can pay the sergeant's position. It is properly budgeted in the police budget. We just need to have the ability to pay whoever's selected for the sergeant's position, and that is the agreed-upon rate of pay.
I think this is the right thing to do, right? So do we need any discussion? Are we going to?
The union has also reviewed this and also approved this as part of this, you know, agreement.
I guess we just make a motion.
Okay, now make a motion to amend the Police Patrolman's collective bargaining agreement to reflect the already budgeted sergeant's hourly wage.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye. Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved.
So that amendment is in the next office for you to sign at the end of the meeting.
Okay. We move on to number five. Thank you, Chief, and we welcome Fire Chief for the monthly report.
Good evening, everyone. Adam Lavoy, Fire Chief. Happy New Year to you all, everyone here tonight, and to the residents of Warren. So in the month of December 2024, the Fire Department responded to 39 fire calls, which included 10 motor vehicle accidents, four medical assists, four activated alarms, five calls were canceled, three service or assist calls, one chimney fire, one carbon monoxide call, four power line incidents, three investigations, three rescues or extrication, excuse me, one extrication, extrication, two brush fires, one good intent call. We did 67 EMS calls on top of that. 16 ALS intercepts were required. We did several inspections to include two smoke and CO inspections, six propane tank inspections, two oil burner inspections, as well as a lot of the meetings that Chief Mallett, you know, mentioned, and assorted trainings. In December, Warren EMS held skills refresher for all EMS personnel. They are required on a yearly basis to make sure that all of our personnel have, you know, specific training on stretcher operations or medical or medication distribution and things like that. So we were able to get all members cleared on that. Warren Fire Personnel completed mask fit testing for all members to ensure proper fit or breathing apparatus masks and equipment, and these are required annually to make sure that nobody's face structure has changed. They don't need a different sized mask, you know, and it has to do with all the breathing apparatus that they have to wear. Terms of budget, the FY25 budget, I continue to watch that closely. I don't see any immediate issues or potential shortages at this time, so, you know, no major red flags, and, you know, we're just entering budget season, so, you know, we're starting to look at FY26 already, so. So it's a busy month in between the holidays and everything, but, you know, but, you know, and our numbers are extremely high compared to last year. You know, we're about 15, almost 16%, which is by far the biggest percentage we've ever seen above our call volume from 2023. So it's, it's been a huge, a huge year. So, but we very much appreciate the support of the board and the community.
Anytime, Chief. I know you do an awesome work, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And happy holidays to you too.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No. Great job, Chief. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right, we should wait for this to.
You get kicked off?
I don't know. My thing hit the blue screen of death.
Will you get a new computer, please?
It is a new computer.
We have a new line for that.
Well, it just did a recovery thing?
Well, it, it said I could try some advanced options, and I just said restart.
Okay.
So it should be coming up.
But this is your personal computer?
It's the first time it's ever done this.
No, that's fine. I'm just.
It waited for a meeting to do it.
Yeah.
Adam broke it.
Yeah, it's because he didn't take our required trainings. You missed a couple of the online ones. They cut you off.
You're done. So the issue, you know, for the whole meeting is because the computer we're using, it resets itself, so it shut down Zoom, and we're getting back onto it.
Get there. I have a. Oh, there we go. All right, ooh, re, yeah, reclaim.
Recording in progress.
Oh, wow, look at that. Okay. We're back.
We're back. Thank you very much. We paused for a couple of minutes just to reset the computer and restart Zoom again because it suddenly just got stopped. No worries, we're good. Fire Chief Adam Lavoy just did his report, and we are gonna continue with our meeting. Thank you, Chief. Next, we have communication, communication from Governor Haley, Chapter 262 of the Acts of 2024, authorizing the continued employment of Stephen Perkins Fire Department.
So this is something we've been waiting for for quite a while now. This was done at one of our annual town meetings. Mr. Perkins has been a firefighter in town for 45 years. He was recently honored at our last awards banquet. In the state of Massachusetts, anyone that wishes to continue past the age of 65 has to actually have a law enacted for them to do so. The town did this once before for Dennis DeRozia. Many may remember that. We did the same thing for Mr. Perkins. It takes quite a long time to go through, but it did finally come through, and ironically, it came through, I got the email on the day of the Santa run, and they always stop at the Perkins residence to say hi to the family and everything. So it was kind of a special moment because right before they showed up, I got the email, so they were able to tell him on sight that he was allowed to once again continue. So his employment can continue to the age of 67, which then he will have to retire, but he's got about eight months left before that because it's taken quite a while to get this done, but it is a full law that's signed by the Senate, the House, and passed, and then eventually signed by the governor themselves. So, you know, it was a long time coming, but the support of the board, Mr. Ferrara, the town, and we're finally there, so he has about eight months left to be able to, to continue on with us. So it's a good thing.
Very good.
Excellent.
Such a wonderful things happen in Christmas, huh?
Yeah, it was. It was very ironic that they were just about to pull into his driveway when, when it happened. So it was kind of neat, but.
Good. I hope this is a good start for this new year. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Looks like it's time for our Town Administrator Monthly Report for the December 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So before you this evening is, as we've been doing since July, just our monthly recaps of various departments and different initiatives that have happened for the month of December. I am pleased to report that our monthly tax collections as of December 26th is $85,784.24, and that comprises of real estate, personal property, motor vehicle excise, interest in fees, sewer liens, registry clears, mobile home parks, and municipal lien certificate fees. The, as you know, in the month of December, we've had our approved tax rate of 1481, which is the lowest in over a decade, which will, will bring some stabilization to taxes, property taxes, for a lot of residents here in town, as well as some ratepayers may see a slight savings in prior fiscal, in the, in the prior years taxes than what they are currently paying. We are all set for budget fiscal year 2026 with the budget calendar and the guidelines have been distributed to departments. The Directive for the Level Services Budget was sent out by the Board of Selectmen. We were awarded a cybersecurity grant from Massachusetts Technology Collaborative in the amount of $24,700 in December, and that's for the purpose of upgrading desktop computers that will soon not be supported by Windows 11 imposed as a significant threat to cybersecurity. We, we are now going to be able to use this grant money to start our, our desktop replacement program. Soon, there will be a proposal in front of the board after we sign this contract with cybersecurity, Mass Cybersecurity. There'll be a contract in front of the board to review for the purchase of these desktop computers moving forward. We, we had several different events that took place in December. Obviously, we had the Chris Heron presentation at Quabog. That was a collaboration between Warren and Westbrookfield with their opiate settlement money. We had the annual tree lighting at the Town Common. We had a holiday party at the Housing Authority for its residents. We are working with Maya to identify risk management needs. We have also finished the repair and refinished the hardwood floors in the Cable Access Room. We're working on replacing cracked and damaged ceiling tiles. The corridor painting project in the, in the main corridor on the first floor of the Shepherd Building is finished, as well as in the Selectmen's Meeting Room and the two main stairwells. There are some touch-ups that are being requested that need to be done by the vendor, which will hopefully be taken care of next week. And Duck and Vent and Cleaning of America came out on December 20th at the Senior Center to perform the cleaning of the ducks and vents in anticipation of a new heating system to be installed in the next couple of months. So those vents and ducts were cleaned, all thanks to a grant through Maya through risk management.
Very good. Thank you. You guys have any questions?
I do. Is the kitchen install, is that on target?
Yes, so they are, we just coordinated with all the contractors. They're coming out on the 24th of this month to do the disconnect, and the delivery is going to be on the 27th.
Okay. And they, they have any events between then?
They have a, their birthday party is on the 24th, I mean, on the 23rd, so.
It's after that.
It's after that, yeah.
No questions? Thank you very much. Next, number eight, we have a discussion and possible vote to appoint Sharon Merly as the Town's Representative on the Quabog Valley Community Development Assistant Corporation Board, anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, I think Sharon was, was joining us via Zoom. I don't know if she's.
She dropped off.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what happened, but.
Do you want to table this, just in case she comes back?
Yeah, sure, we could, yeah.
Or just move, just defer it till later in the meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
You want to text her or something and see if she's gonna?
Sure, I can try.
She was on prior to the computer issue, right?
And after it.
Oh, was she?
Yeah, she just dropped like, literally like two minutes ago.
Maybe she said, oh, it's my turn, and she's running over here.
We can do the complete streets if you want to move on to nine and.
Okay. For now, we're just gonna continue on our list, and we'll go back to number eight. Number nine is discussion and review with possible vote to adopt a complete street policy for the town, anticipated vote.
So with this, I think we should review it because there could be some challenges to this. I was talking with Mr. Ferrara about it, and they could be requiring us to put bike paths and things like that on roads when we redo them, and that could cause some issues. So we just want to make sure we review that, look it over. So I would table it till the next meeting.
Then, what, is there a summary of this or?
So this, from my understanding, this came from the SEDAC meeting, and it's been recommended by CMRPC as well as SEDAC to, to have the town adopt a clear policy for, for the implementation of complete streets and, and the town's commitment to complete streets. So this was drafted, this is pretty, you know, basic, you know, language that communities have adopted for the implementation of complete streets. This is the first time that it is in front of the, our board, and, you know, it is a pretty expansive policy. And, you know, the board may want to have an opportunity to, you know, review it for a week.
Okay, so we're gonna table it and review it in a week?
Sure.
So I'll just say, if you look at number three exemptions, there are goals in complete street, in the complete streets program, but if it doesn't make sense because the road's too narrow or whatever the conditions may be, there are ways to just file for an exemption and handle those situations. So that, you know, like the issue with bike paths. So on, like 67, it would be hard to say no probably, but on like Route 19, South Bridge Road.
I just don't want to get forced into something where the town would have to acquire people's personal property, their front yards to widen roads or anything like that.
It says like the existing right-of-way, I mean, number one does not allow for the accommodation of all users, you know, so.
Do you know if the towns benefit from accepting this?
So at some point, you know, because we have been successful with grants for road projects, at some point, the state is going to say, where's, you know, your policy for complete streets, and do you have one that's adopted? And that will be weighed for. And that will be weighed for future grants. So, you know, it is, you know, kind of important for the town to 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 have this for future grants.
It is. It's like the MVP in the Mass, what is it, Municipal Vulnerability Program. If we, because we have that now, we can get these action grants to deal with like culverts and stuff. This is going to be the same thing. If we have a complete streets policy, then we open ourselves up to grant opportunities, so it's.
Now, there's there's things in here that, you know, obviously, if you want to look at and tweak, you know, this is the first time that this document's come before you guys. So it it probably makes sense to, you know, to have a week to.
Yeah, let's have a week because we.
Then maybe Jeremy can show up next weekend.
Something like this is not one size fits all. We are a smaller town with smaller roads with, you know, it, so we got to make sure that we can protect ourselves as well. Not because they they do this in a bigger town or a city and they were gonna try to make it fit over here and may affect the residents, so.
What fits in Cambridge probably wouldn't fit in Warren, so.
Yeah, just protect ourselves, but we need to get it so we can get more grants.
But we can tweak the document.
Yeah, there there's some, you know, things where, you know, if you wanted to say, you know, have this, you know, the board of selectmen make a final review or, you know, some type of notification to the selectmen or something where, you know, you know, if there's a project that's coming up and that requires some type of, you know, modification or adjustment and you guys want to have a review of it, yeah.
Was this run by legal at all? Do you know?
No.
Okay, do we need to?
It's, you know, it's.
Or is it kind of boilerplate?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, if you want, if you want, I mean, you know, it is kind of standard, you know, stuff.
Yeah, but I think having legal work at it, because they may have dealt with some issues in this and said, yeah, I know this is good, but you want to have this out of there because we've had this issue with other communities. And you can run into this problem, you know, just to prevent us from running into problems because we're signing an agreement or a policy for future. And it's dealing with our roadways and I don't want to get into agreeing to something that we're going to commit to and not be able to do. You know, and I I know what you're saying, well, we can request a waiver or a variance. Well, sometimes that process really isn't that easy and the people that you request them to are not exactly the easiest people to to deal with, so.
Yeah.
I'd just like to review it, you know, table till next week, like Mr. Belize said.
Okay.
So table for a week. We're gonna discuss this and study it a little bit better.
All right, so Sharon was on for like a minute and then dropped again?
Okay.
So I mean, she might have connection issues then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can just.
Well, if she comes back, we can, we can have her in. Ten, review and possible vote to execute a contract with POP Construction, Inc. for delivered materials, FY twenty-five road construction materials, hired equipment bid, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So before you this evening is the final contract that was part of the IFB that went out in the fall for the FY twenty-five road and highway construction materials and hired equipment bid. This is for delivered materials. We were waiting on the performance and payment bond. We have received that as well as the insurance. This is is ready to be signed for the board. P.I.P. was the lowest.
This is material primarily used by highway?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's for a thousand tons, three fourths washed stone. And then the the awarded price is twenty-seven dollars per ton. A thousand tons of one and a half washed stone at twenty-seven dollars per ton. And then a thousand tons of one and a half processed gravel at twenty-seven dollars per ton.
So it's ten thousand times twenty-seven?
It's a thousand.
Yeah, but ten tons, it's a, is ten thousand.
A thousand tons, yeah.
Okay, tons to tons.
Yeah.
At some point, I heard pounds, sorry. Any questions?
No.
I'm good.
No.
I'm good.
So we just have a motion to approve the contract and you guys can sign it after the meeting?
I'll make a motion to execute a contract with P.O.P. Construction, Inc. for FY twenty-five road construction materials.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrana? Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved. Number eleven, review and possible vote to execute a contract between Warren Historical Commission and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for professional services, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So before you this evening is a contract for professional services for the Warren Historical Commission with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And the services are to prepare a second draft of the National Registry nomination and to take new photos if needed of the South Warren Cemetery. And based on the National Register nomination, work with the Warren Historical Commission to organize updated documents and incorporate edits and new information as requested by the Mass Historical Commission and to be submitted for a second draft to the National Register nomination and submit second draft nomination to the Warren Historical Commission for review and approval and submit the approved draft nomination to the Mass Historical Commission for a second round of review. And this is all in relationship to professional services for the South Warren Cemetery National Registry nomination. They have money within their budget and this is a four thousand dollar contract, not to exceed four thousand.
So what they need to take pictures for?
For their National Register nomination. This is for their application for the South Warren Cemetery to get on the National Registry.
Does they have anything?
No.
No. Good.
Yeah.
They have the money to fund it. It's funded already, so.
Go for it.
So I'll make a motion to execute a contract between the Warren Historical Commission and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for professional services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrana, aye. Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved. Number twelve, acceptance of a state grant in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars from Mass DEP from its recycling dividends program, anticipated vote.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a a a state grant that the town receives annually for the recycling dividend program for sustainable materials and recovery program. The town of Warren has earned eleven points and will be receiving three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars in the form of a grant for dealing with recycling matters.
Are we doing good or is just like, is this like a price or?
Yeah, it's based on, it's, there's a, there's a rate, a rate here and they, so we got eleven points. It's based on, so we got a point for bulky items, center for hard to recycled materials. We get, we got two points there, we got a two points in reuse programs. Solid waste reduction, we got five points. Textile recovery initiatives, we got a point. So we got eleven points and each point is valued at three hundred and fifty dollars. And so we got three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars coming to us. And this will be administered by the Board of Health.
Who keeps track of this, these totals to to submit?
I believe the Board of Health submits reports to DEP.
What does D get to do with recycling?
What does what?
D have to do with recycling?
What is D? I'm not following. Could you explain?
Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, DEI. What's that got to do with recycling? You get points for that?
You do.
We got to look at some way of doing a like another waste reduction, like a pickup program. See if we can get the truck out here again and see if we can do a, like, people dropping off their old paint and stuff like that.
And another shred day.
Yeah, we need a.
I got a ton of stuff.
Do you?
Well, yeah, I get, you know, like old tax records and stuff every year.
You just don't burn them in your backyard? Get a big barrel.
That's a good idea.
Chief will be yelling.
He's not here.
Just give him a burn permit, you'll be fine.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm okay with the, with the item to accept it. I'm just looking at the, that list and maybe we can have that as a goal to, you know, make more points.
Sure, yeah, sure.
Nothing wrong with the, with the amount or, you know, the grant. I'm just looking at, maybe in the future, we can do something to get more points.
And I think from my conversation with Jess in the Board of Health, I think that's, you know, that's what she's, you know, they're looking to do in terms of, you know, doing some expanding with another bulky recycling day, you know, possibly do some more, you know, initiatives with recycling.
Does this money go to the Board of Health or just in the general fund?
No, it goes into a, it's a grant, so it it's in a, in a grant account. And I believe that there's other grant money. So we get this grant every year based off of the points that we we score. So there's money in the account that can be used for programs like you've just mentioned.
Oh, okay.
For the future, so these, this money is to be used for, you know, recycling initiatives that the town wants to undertake.
Okay.
Another one would be like bulk electronics, people, everybody getting new TVs and stuff and, you know, getting rid of their old TVs is something we can do.
Yep.
I'd rather see them going in the back of a truck and getting recycled than being dumped into the woods because somebody doesn't want to pay twenty-five dollars to the dump.
Yeah.
You know?
Going back to D, it says it means creating an environment where everyone feels welcome and valued for their unique differences.
Yeah, we know about that.
I didn't know. I had to look for it. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the Mass DEP grant in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrana, aye.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved. Get the grant. Hopefully, we can see more coins. Number thirteen, acceptance of a state grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars from the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative for the support of upgrading desktop computers and authorized the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So this, before you this evening, is the actual grant contract from Mass Tech Collaborative. This is a first for the town to get a grant from Mass Tech Collaborative. And we're really excited about this because it's going to be helping us get to a position where we can start replacing the desktops that are, that are going to be very problematic to us imposed as a cybersecurity risk because they will not be supporting any updates on the Windows eleven in the very near future. And so.
I think it's the opposite way. You cannot install Windows eleven on them so we cannot support and have security on them.
Right, we can't have security on them. So this is, this grant is going to help us, you know, get new computers.
Very good, very well needed.
How many computers is this going to purchase roughly?
Twenty-one.
Nice. And will that take care of our Windows ten backlog?
That will take a good chunk of those, if not all of them.
Okay.
You know, there may be a few stragglers. I think there was like twenty-four or twenty-three on the list, so.
And we still got money that the town voted on too.
We have other money too.
Still have that money too. So we could definitely take care of any of the ones that need to be done and maybe get a new computer for Rich over there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What is that? What kind of computer is that?
It's a Dell.
You hear that, right? No Dells. Just kidding. Okay. We need a vote for this?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the Mass Technology Collaborative grant and approve the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrana, aye.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved. For fifteen years, I had Dells.
This is the first bad one I've gotten. Well, no, I'll take that back, the second one, the second bad one.
And you've only had two.
Yeah.
I think it's pure luck.
It is, yeah.
Okay, number fourteen, warrants and bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. PR twenty for one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and three cents. AP twenty-six for seventy-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrana, aye.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, warrants approved. Next, bills.
I make a motion to pay KP Law in the amount of, total amount of five thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents. Expert Flooring LLC for thirty-five hundred. Warren Water District for two hundred and nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. WB Mason for a hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Security and Fire Integrations LLC for fifty-five dollars. Amazon Business, fifty dollars and eighteen cents. Marlin Leasing Corp. for one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Verizon for a total amount of five hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. National Grid for a total amount of eighty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. Crystal Rock for ten dollars and fifty-eight cents. Masters Telecom for ninety-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. SBA Structures LLC for one thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and forty-seven cents. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for fifteen thousand. Three sixty Building Remodeling for forty-nine hundred dollars. Pine Ridge Technologies, Inc. for six hundred and forty-eight dollars. And Vanpool for four thousand, two dollars and fifteen cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrana, aye.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
And then I'll make a motion to reimburse, or pay Rich Ihocker for the amount of, or the Zoom account in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I second that. All in favor?
David DeFrana, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
I abstain.
Motion passed. Next, we have approval of editing meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December fifth, two thousand twenty-four. December twelfth and the nineteenth at five PM, which with Rich abstaining.
So I have to abstain for the twelfth, so.
So I'll, I'll just do it for the fifth and the nineteenth then. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for
Oh, hold on, sorry. I wasn't at the do, do the fifth.
Do one at a time.
Because that's the one I was at. The other two I was not at. The twelfth I was not at and then the, the first meeting on the nineteenth I was not at.
You sure you're gonna be okay now?
Yep.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Minutes approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
No, December twelfth. You just did the fifth.
Why is that one? Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second that. All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
I abstain.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second that. All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
I abstain.
Sharon's still not back, huh?
No.
Why don't we just go to her, approve her then, or vote on her?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so we're moving back to number eight. This is the discussion and possible vote to appoint Sharon Melly as the town representative on the Quabog Valley Community Development Assistant Corporation Board. Anticipated vote.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sharon Melly as the town's representative on the Quabog Valley Community Development Assistance Corporation Board for an indefinite term.
Do we need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. We're good? Town administrator report?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This week's been a busy week for the first swing of the first year. I, I hope everybody had a great holiday and a, a happy and healthy new year. So we started out the year with a department head meeting this Tuesday at, at nine. With board chairs as well were invited. We had Deb Williams from Maya, our risk manager, talk about risk management initiatives, some upcoming, upcoming Maya trainings that are gonna be offered. And to try to also engage department heads and, and, and chairs in some best practices and initiatives when it comes to risk management. The meeting went very well. We went over also in the meeting, our, our budget calendar, our, our budget guidelines, as well as cybersecurity issues in, in cyber trainings that have been taking place. I was pleased to report that cyber trainings have increased from, from November to December. There is more people participating in the trainings. So that's a good thing. I'd like to continue to see this trend because it's so critically important. We'll continue to monitor it. If for some reason, you know, you know, we, you know, we continue to see a, a decline in participation in trainings, you know, there is a, an alternative that we could do with Entree where it would, you know, lock the potential user out of the system and not allow them to continue using the system until they complete the trainings. That is a step that if we really wanna continue to, you know, be very serious and vigilant on cybersecurity, you know, that is something that we could implement in the future. So I just wanna let, you know, the board know that if we, you know, if we don't continue to see participation in trainings, that is an initiative that, that could be, could be given by the board if they wanted to.
It's a good excuse to not to work. I can't work, I can't log in.
No, that's
unacceptable.
Yeah, it's not acceptable. It's condition of employment to be able to get your job done if you can't function in your job capacity. Or
But, I mean, the
Or there, there, or that period of time, sit there and do your training.
Yeah.
Here's an hour today, get your training done.
I'd rather that than
Focus, focus it, or, or, or stand down. A day of stand down or stand down after lunch or something like that, or, you know, where you're doing a training. Where everybody, get online, do your online training.
So the Yeah, I mean, I laugh at this, but it's, it isn't
These are serious things.
I know, that's the prob, that's what I'm about to say, is the the ramifications of getting an email and clicking on a link are devastating for this, for the town.
Did the school just get hacked or?
I don't know, really.
One of their, something to do with the school got hacked.
And the problem now is
The app that takes the
It wasn't them directly, it was
It wasn't the school.
It was like a third party that they worked with that got hacked for information, student information.
I just read an article before coming here that, you know, there's, attacks are up. They're more sophisticated, they look more real, they're using AI, so there's not like the stupid misselling mistakes that you can usually look at and say, okay, this is bogus. So it's getting very hard to detect bogus emails, so.
The big one, it's not just that, is Marketplace on Facebook. People stealing other people's identity and posting stuff that they own on Marketplace. So it's like, you know, you take a picture of your truck and then they're selling your truck on Marketplace. And then you, you use like the Vemo app and you pay for it, like, oh, yeah, I'll pay five thousand dollars for that truck. Pay for it with Vemo and and you're out of your money.
There are communities, larger communities, that, that do institute that policy where, you know, if, you know, if you do not complete your trainings, you're locked out until you complete your trainings. And that's a way to, you know, to ensure that, you know, trainings are getting done. And, and, you know, you know, I'm, I'm very hopeful that we never have to file a claim for, you know, a cybersecurity attack. But if we did, you know, Maya will be looking at the participation at, at trainings in order to pay a claim. So
They will go after the person who didn't do the, or it will go after us.
No, it will, it will go after the town. They will deny.
Responsibility. That, that's what I'm trying to get to. It is we, you know, with memos, talking and information, we have to let them know, you know, if something happens because of X, Y, and Z, you know, we are, the town will get, you know. They're gonna be, you know, they're gonna find out where was the leak.
Right. So I, you know, I, I just wanna mention this to the board, you know, as, as a potential option in the toolbox down the road. I'm not suggesting it right now, but, you know, if we see a dip in, in, in participation again, you know, I will be bringing it to the board and saying, hey, look at, you know, we need to take a look at this, you know, further. But, you know, I, I was pleased that from November to December, there was an uptick in, 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 in in people's participation, which is good, and we gotta just, you know, stay on that.
Can we do something like, it, it is a condition to get your year in review to have done or your?
Oh, no, we, we do have that on, on our, on our values, our, our evals. And, you know, that's, you know, participating in, in trainings. And if you're, if you're not participating in a training, you know, we'll have the list and, you know, you'll read it accordingly.
I'll tell you, my work, my employer, if you don't complete, complete the cybersecurity training or the the anti-terrorism training that you're supposed to do, they lock you out of the computer. And the only way you can get it unlocked is to go sit in the computer information office and do it on their computer. Or have your supervisor log in and then you log in underneath him to do it. And you get to sit there with your supervisor to do the training. So that's kinda
Can we bring, can we bring up, like, say, if you get locked and then you don't get paid for it?
Well, I mean, you, you know, I, I think, you know, there's a whole bunch of different things you can do, but, you know, one of the things that, that is probably the most effective is, is locking the computer and, and, you know, the person's not able to use the computer until they can, you know, complete their training.
What about, I, it's all the employees, right? Not, not elected people.
Well, it's anybody who has an email address.
Yeah, who has an account. So for example, planning board has no thing. If you lock me, I'm fine. You can't.
Right, right, right.
So we don't have a
Well, you have a, you have a selectman email address, so that, 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 that is also, you know, part of the
Can you lock it? No.
Yeah, I mean, well, you could disable an email address, like my email or Derek's email.
It will, it will lock you out of the system until you do your, your trainings.
So somebody like Ed Landigan on Planning Board who's got a Gmail address, it doesn't matter.
We don't have anything.
Not town computers, so.
Well, he's not, he's not logging on to a town computer either.
Yeah, that's So he's not covered under the insurance. But let's say, not us, but someone sitting here in the future. He said, you locked me up? Thank you. What are you gonna do?
Well, that's a, that's a tough position because they're elected, right? I mean, you know.
Well, no, because we've had selectmen that refuse to have an email address at all, or cellphone, or any other way of communication.
Well, but then they're not in the system, so they're not a threat.
No, but there's also no way of communicating with them either when they need to. You gotta be available for the people, be available to the town if needed.
Yeah.
So how do you get information to somebody like that?
Yeah, I don't know.
So for, the position of the board is difficult.
It's difficult.
We are not in the system physically, but we are digitally in the system because we receive emails.
So I think the town really needs to be careful with that too. Because you're doing town business with a private email and that's not really good because you're still putting documents and using a personal computer which is putting town information on it. And that personal computer, if something happens, could be subpoenaed and taken from you and used in court. And you may not see that computer again for a very long time. And if you destroy any records by deleting and saying, oh, you know, I don't need that anymore, I'm gonna archive or I'm gonna dump my folders and clean up my computer. And you failed to maintain records for the adequate amount of time because even digital records are, have to be maintained. And if you delete those, you committed a violation of the It's record log.
Yeah.
So I think it's a bad policy for town employees, even elected employees, to have private email. And they all should have a town email address as a town employee.
Absolutely should.
The problem with that is it's expensive. That's why we haven't done that. And a lot of them didn't need it because they had boards that would, or admins that will do that. But they really shouldn't be getting and receiving emails on private email accounts.
Well, this goes
I think it sets up the town for possible lawsuits.
Yep. Well, it goes back to the email addresses, which aren't correct anyway. Because the three of us are on this board and we're on Planning Board. So we should have separate email addresses for those two boards, but we don't. Because the way
Well, you don't need separate email addresses.
Well, it would be better to separate your Planning Board work from your Select Board work, you know.
You just gotta
I'd rather have separate.
Yes, but you can actually split that email
You can make a folder.
You're folder-y. So all Planning Board stuff goes into it. Yeah. I know it's not, I know it's not the most convenient and it's, it's different, but
But then what if I end up, I'm not on Select Board anymore, I'm still on Planning Board? Now I have this mix. It would be easier just to shut my Select Board email off and I still have Planning Board. But now I would end up with this mix of emails.
But then you would have two email addresses for the same name.
Well, that's okay.
And it would cost the town double just for one person.
I think we can make this a conversation, but let's go even back to the training. How can, I don't know, maybe put a board out over there, put, these people haven't completed your training. I don't know, something like, just, how can we make them, you know, I've seen it in the past, having somebody, oh, you locked my computer? I'm here. I can't work, why? I can't log in. What are you gonna do?
Well, then the supervisor should be counseling them on that.
Well, that's the hard part.
Well, it's, it's up to the supervisor to push it. I know, again, with mine, it gives me a countdown. It says, you must complete your training within thirty days. And then the next day, you got twenty-nine days to complete your training. And like tomorrow, if you're, you know, one day to complete your training or you'll be shut off. And then if you go in there and try to log on and again, a banner comes up and says
How, how is it working?
See information directory.
Is it by year?
So
Is the training by year?
By month, every month.
Every month.
Every first of the month.
I'll put my example there. I'm like behind like five months right now. Shut them out. Could you close my account?
I mean, you know, we don't, we don't have that policy in place right now, but I mean, yeah, yes, you, you could be closed out.
So what, what if we ask the IT company and say, you know, send that email on, like, you are behind three months of training. You, you know, something that you said you have a clock, you must get your things trained, things done.
Well, that's what you've been doing.
Yeah, right. I mean, they send out a reminder every first of the month and then, you know, I, I have also sent out reminders to, to, to individuals where I get the report, where I say, hey, look at, you know, you're, you're behind on your cybersecurity. You gotta log in and, and, you know, either get them unlocked because the, what happens is that after a month, they give you a month to complete it. And then after that month, it, it, it goes incompleted. And so that, that training is then locked. So then you have to create a ticket to open that, that training. And then when you open the training, then you can, you can, you can take the training again.
Why is it monthly?
It's every month, that's how they do the training, once a month.
Can we ask them to
Why can't it just be annual?
Annual training?
Yeah, why, why is it
Because there's so many topics. There's a lot of topics.
Yeah, well, you're doing cybersecurity, you're dealing with the internet, you're dealing with online shopping, which you shouldn't be doing at work anyways, emails.
But if, I think if, so the thing is, the monthly training is literally like five or ten minutes?
It's, it's about ten minutes.
It's not long, whereas if you had one annual one, it would probably be an hour.
Right.
So, I mean, these, this is not hard to do every month, right? Ten minutes, you just have to do it, so.
It, the purpose is, is just to keep the, the matter as a top mind awareness. And to give you a little bit of a taste and a reminder of what, you know, what is out there. And there, Rich is right, there's a variety of topics. It's not just, you know, it could be, you know, I think the last monthly topic was about, you know, HIPAA in, in privacy information and, you know, sensitive, you know, information that may come across your desk. One was about making sure that your workstation is neat and orderly. You know, another one was about, you know, clicking and spam emails. And then, then there was another one about phishing emails. So, you know, there's, there's different topics that come up every month that, you know, and it, it only takes about ten minutes to complete. So, you know, there's, there's different topics that come up every month that, um, you know, and it it only takes about ten minutes to complete.
So you're, the way I understood is, like, I'm five month behind and I wanna do my training, I can only do one of those? And open tickets? Cause last year I did all the, all them at once and I didn't have to open a ticket.
Right, so the.
What is a ticket? Describe me a ticket.
So a ticket is just saying, entree uh, service ticket, um, please unlock uh, my trainings uh, for the months of. Uh, July, August and September. And then it goes to there, it goes to the the entree service desk, they create a ticket. And then the service tech will unlock it and will send you an email back, okay, you're unlocked.
What is the purpose of locking them?
It's to get people to to do this every month. That's the goal. If the goal is not to just say, okay, I'm gonna sit here for two hours and just get these done. And 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 and, you know, I got the checkmark, I'm done. The purpose here is to get everybody in a routine to do these every month. So that they, uh, un, you know, that it's continually reminding them.
I I I'd rather have instead of locking it, to have it like, okay, I have a month to do it and I don't do it. Instead of locking them, after that, every, every, every day, I'm gonna get a ma- a ma- a an email, repet- repetitive email saying, hey, you gotta do this, you gotta do this. Until you do, instead of locking them, because locking now.
I mean, thirty days is a lot of time for ten minutes of your time.
Maybe after fifteen days, start getting an email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that, right?
I, what I, one of the things that I want is not to have you go after the people. I want the system automatically go after the people. And talk to them, maybe not, I I really don't like the locking thing because now I'm gonna have to open five tickets. Means more work for me and it's okay, I'm not gonna do that right now, I have something else to do.
But again, if you were, if you were doing what you're supposed to be doing, which is taking them every month.
Yes.
You wouldn't have to create a ticket, you wouldn't have to do all these additional steps. So there's a point in time where we we have to hold people accountable. And 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 in thirty days, in my, in my, my honest opinion, is plenty of time to do this. Within, you know, it only takes ten minutes of your time.
Is that something we can add a policy to it?
Oh, sure, yeah.
I don't, I'm I'm just afraid that if something happens, it leak and we get infected, we get something and something bad, we have to spend. Thousands of dollars trying to fix it, then insurance gonna come and say, oh, you had five people who didn't train, you who weren't trained, we don't pay you.
They couldn't do that.
That's what'll happen.
That's what's gonna happen, so.
That's what I just said, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So to prevent that.
So for for preventing that, um, you know, there's, there's tools that we could do, we could. Obviously, we 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 have to have a, um, you know, uh, you know, continuing to educate our our employees. And continuing to make it, uh, you know, uh, an a priority. You know, there's other things down the road, if we see that people are continuing not to, you know, not to participate, we can lock the computers, that's a tool. You know, we continue to, um, you know, look at the um, evals uh, in in continuing to do that. And if something gets really, 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 you know, um, of a concern, you know, then we can certainly, um, you know.
Okay, so.
Write that up.
So we don't make it more longer, do we need to say, okay, we're gonna lock them?
Not right now.
Not right now?
Not right now. I, in the future, you know, like I said, I was really, I was really, uh, impressed from dec- from November to December, people. Uh, participated more. Um, but if we, if numbers dip, when the reports come out, I will let the board know.
When are the reports come out?
At the end of the month. Or usually the beginning of the fall, of the next month.
So why don't, why don't we just delegate it? Supervisors. Hey, supervisors, at the end of the year, if all your people don't have their training done and they've been missing them. You're the one gonna take a hit on it, you're gonna get a bad review, you get. You're not gonna be a top performer. So.
I like that.
Hold the count supervisors accountable, let the supervisors chase these people, send their names to their supervisors and say, hey. Get your people doing this. And just so you know, it's a reviewing, it's an element that's gonna be reviewed. And it could reflect in your annual appraisal.
Sure.
Fire chief has a, has a.
Please, just so you know, Jim has done that.
Police chief.
Because I have few guys that, um, and it goes back to the beginning, they were sending the the training emails and we thought it was spam and we believed them. So that's why, like, for the first four months, no, I don't.
I I'm, I don't blame you, I thought the same thing to you the first time, but I, then I thought, oh, this is a new dude.
And then, uh, Jim has sent me the. List, so then I got on my guys to get on it.
So it worked?
Yeah.
So the supervisor chased down his people and you didn't have to do it and it got done.
So, okay, so in front of everybody here. Administ- uh, sorry, town administrator's gonna ask me to, please do any, any um, trainings that you do?
Please.
I will.
Thank you.
Yes, me too.
Thank you.
Rich?
No.
So moving on from the cybersecurity stuff, um, this week, um, uh, we also, um, uh, met. I met with the sewer, uh, uh, chief operator Ralph, we're we're going over, um, um. A sc- a scum pump IFB, uh, we're looking at, um, at specifications. Getting some new scum pumps at the, uh, at the plant. Um, I I also did attend a Ware Business Association and Beyond, uh, networking event last night in Palmer. Uh, again, promoting the town and and, uh, economic development opportunities. Um, I'm pleased to report, as as mentioned before, the, uh, the flooring in the, uh. Cable advisory room is complete, uh, as well as the quilt box, uh, the quilt box is up. Uh, in the main corridor with the two hundred and fiftieth commemorative quilt. Um, Mrs. Buck, uh, as well as, um, uh, a few other members of the, uh, historical commission came by this week. They were very pleased, uh, with how it came out. Uh, there was a few individuals, uh, from town. Uh, who were part of making that quilt, uh, that stopped by this week, uh, to see, uh, the quilt on display. Um, I have suggested to Mrs. Buck to, uh, do a, um, a dedication in the future. Uh, where we could have the boards, uh, come out, uh, to do a dedication, maybe have a plaque. Uh, either posted by it or or, uh, on one of the, uh, uh, edges of the, uh, of the box. Um, signifying the individuals that were responsible for for making that quilt, um, and recognizing them and. Um, and trying to identify all of the, uh, um, all of the aspects of the town within that quilt. Um, is a challenge, but if you stand there and you go through it, you can pick out, oh, that's the Wright's Mills, oh, that's the senior center. That's the elementary school, that's the Saint Paul's Church, all of those, um, different, um. You know, icons of the town are are on that quilt and it was made by the residents of the town and. And, you know, that that has been sitting in a box for the last twenty years at least, um, in a closet. So now it's, uh, properly on display and thanks to, um, the funding through the board of selectmen. Uh, we were able to get that, uh, put up, um, at a reasonable price, I thought. Um, you know, in twenty twenty, they were looking to do this project, uh, they got a quote of for five thousand, that was five years ago. Um, so we were able to get the project completed for forty-nine hundred dollars five years later, um, and it's up.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Looks very good. And so you know, um, each one of those little patches that the residents made. They've signed them in the bottom right hand corner.
Oh, yeah.
The names are on them all.
I see them, yeah. In white.
Yep.
Well, in black some.
I was over there looking at it because I seen it being posted on Facebook.
Yeah, they're looking for.
Somebody posted on Facebook looking for information who did the patches on there and. Um, a lot of the names are already on there.
So they're looking to, Mrs. Buck is looking to invite all of those people, if they're still around in town. To a a ceremony, a dedication in the future, um, for that, so, um, we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. Um, working on, uh, the the selectmen, uh, desks have been ordered, um, as part of the the last round of the ARPA money. Um, dishwasher, uh, as I mentioned before, uh, project is gonna be, uh, uh, completed at the end of this month. Um, and we're working with our electrician on the, on, um, the ceiling, uh, uh, wiring, uh. For the owl camera, as well as some emergency lighting deficiencies that we have to address as part of our recent fire inspection. We have some IFBs that are gonna be going out for, um, fire exhaust system, senior center roof, sc- scum pumps. Um, and, uh, we will also be, uh, uh, bringing back some proposals for, uh, the computers as well. Um, very soon. Next week, uh, I was notified by, um, uh, Mr. Duff that there may be, uh, negotiations. Uh, on the sixteenth for the, uh, for the, uh, the, um. Teachers, um, uh, bargaining unit, um, and, um. You know, they they said that I could participate, um, in in those, so I, I may, uh, be absent of this meeting next Thursday.
You could participate, you are participating.
Yeah, yeah, it's important that you be there.
Yes.
Um, and then, um, the following Thursday, uh, we are, um, in Boston at the annual conference.
You guys going to that?
Yeah, I am.
You are? Is it staying there?
Is what?
Sleeping there the night?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know why they do it in February.
Yeah, it's always every, every, you know.
It's just ridiculous.
Right after, um, the New Year.
Should be doing, doing it like in spring or fall or summer or something.
Yeah.
There's no parking there and everybody's miserable and.
Yeah, but once you're in there, you never have to leave, like with the Hines, like.
Just driving through to get there.
Yeah, you know, you're in and then two days later, you're leaving, so.
It would be nice to take the train over here and just go over.
Yeah, the train would be awesome.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? David?
No.
Rich?
No.
Thank you very much for your report, new business. I don't have any new business.
I do not.
Old business.
Old businesses, um. I would just like to bring up again, us reviewing, um. Taking the rotary out of centered town. For the parks. Or for the common park and explore that option, because the town doesn't really need a rotary. To go around the monument, if we acqui- you know, remove that road going around. We could add so much more space to the park. And I think that would be a good option. And then we wouldn't have to put parking or identify parking in the park. Because just that road that we would take. Could give us more than enough parking for that area. And instead of having a roundabout, it would just go straight through. And that roundabout would be just turned into a, the section would be just turned into parking lot area. I think that's probably our best option. Because it's, right now, it's just wasted space. And then the town can also enjoy the memorial, the monument that's there, that nobody can walk to because you might get run over.
Road, yeah.
So.
So when did the discussion start on the Town Common redesign?
I think they're gonna have a, a next. There's not another meeting scheduled as of yet, I think they're gonna do it next month.
Okay, alright, so, yeah, we can, is that the CDAC or is it here?
I think it's a part of CDAC and and there's a special committee that has also been established as a Town Common Committee. So it's whenever they post their meeting.
Do you know where they're gonna do the, um, the topo for the property line and all that? The, the survey?
Uh, that will, that will be part of the, uh, you know, the project, but I don't know when, when that will happen.
Cause that's the one that's gonna dictate that option. To make sure there's proper.
So we have to make sure that we can even use that as an option.
Also. Yeah, I can, I can see, for example, we 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 use parkway in one way and. The road between the gas station and the rotary in the other, another way, now we have more space because it's only one way. So there's a, the potential, there's a lot of things to do, but we have to, um, you know, explore them all and. Look for the proper information.
Just figured I'd bring that up as old business, because remember we talked about it last time we met.
So how can, to follow up, so what, how can we find out? What can we, if it's possible to do it, to bring it to the table?
I would just defer it to the committee.
Yeah, the committee, Town Common Committee.
Yeah.
Do you, does anybody here know, maybe you know how it was in the past, many, many years ago? How did it look like?
At one time.
Just say your name, Joe.
Joe Conrad, that's good. At one time, it was two-way, right next to the gas station, to go under the underpass. The, uh. Oh, I'd say even five years ago, it was still a two-way. When they redesigned. Where they wanted the one-way. Out of one side of the monument, the other way would be in, near or third of the gas station. But.
I wonder if there, if we have plans of what it looked like before they did that, the change that made it now.
Well, the Mass Highway Department would have something.
Maybe even look, the the property land would be there.
Yeah, well.
Cause as I remember it.
Have it pinned.
The west side of the monument was the left turn lane, and if you went around the monument, then you were turning right.
But it was so confusing, I remember.
It was, yeah.
You're like, so many people go to this.
Yeah.
But e- even today. Uh, people don't stop at the stop sign, they just. Do a pause and blow right out in front of Main Street traffic. And that, that is so dangerous. I mean, sooner or later, there's gonna be a collision there. And as the chief could probably tell you. It doesn't take much because people come down that hill forty miles an hour. You hit somebody doing ten, you're taking their car out.
Yeah, I wonder how it was like a hundred, two hundred years ago.
You know, entire area was grow grass or dirt, yeah.
Well, there's, in in designing things, there's some, some part where you said, bring the past forward. And, you know, if the theme is kind of like, let's make it look like it was a long time ago, it has a plus on having a positive.
It looks like a sea of pavement on that one, but I don't think that's, that's not an accurate representation.
Well, we'll, we'll look into it, I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Joe. Any correspondence?
Mister Chairman, we do have one, um, it is from, uh, attorney, uh, Gary Weiner. Um, and it's about a, a notice of, uh, mortgage foreclosure for lots on Devil's Lane. Lots five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten and eleven on Devil's Lane. Noting, uh, notifying the board that there is a, um, a potential foreclosure auction for those lots, um, in March.
So they're giving us first, right of first refusal then? Is that what they're entertaining?
They are, um.
If they foreclose.
If they foreclose, right.
Cause that all, all that land is in chapter.
This, this is the road that got closed by the Mass Pike.
Yeah, it's near the, yeah.
Um, which side, Devil's Lane is all on the south side of the Pike, right? So these are all, do we know?
Well, it's, call it Forest Avenue on the other side. On the north side of Mass Pike. You know, speaking of this, I I don't know if you guys saw the, watched the movie Cars. Where it was a beautiful town with a lot of prosper and everything. And then they put a highway next to it and everybody forgot the town, that's how it. That's how I, I feel like Warren is, cause they, they used to say that there were a lot of businesses a long time ago. And after the Mass Pike, it's gonna like, we were lost.
Warren used to have its own trolley at one point, right?
Yeah. Okay, that's not it.
At one time, the trolley would come from Westbrookfield.
That one.
Go all the way to downtown West Warren where it would turn around to go back.
Devil's Lane.
Somebody told me there were like forty businesses in West Warren back then, forty businesses. What happened? It's just like the movie.
Well, mine had. Yes, I think you're right.
So this is five, six, seven, eight, nine, so it's all this stuff here.
Where is it?
Well, it says.
Brimfield side of the Pike.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, which would be.
Five to eleven.
I don't know where eleven.
How big are those properties?
They're big, very long.
Yeah, they're long, but they're thin.
So, yeah, all these.
There's not much, it's, this, it's just like those.
But the funny thing is.
It's not telling you what the acreage is?
Yeah, if you click on it.
I have to click on it. For god's sakes.
You need a mouse.
Yeah.
You need to put the acreage on here.
Where is the? Thirty-four acres, so number ten is thirty-four, so you, you know, these go down, but, you know, roughly. So what was I gonna look?
So you're looking at probably about a, a hundred plus acres there.
But.
There are houses there.
There are houses, so I'm not sure what's going on with that, right? House, something's there, I think it's a house, there's definitely something there and there.
It's a swimming pool.
Yep, or a big hot tub.
Yeah.
Yeah, but so these look like they would be occupied, I don't know.
What is that on the right?
The ones on the below are Brimfield.
Yeah.
I think those last three or four houses are in Warren.
That'll give us a better idea. Oh, so right before this little road.
Well, that's like, I live in, in Warren, but I go through Brimfield.
So it's everything to the right of the road, in between the Pike?
Yeah, no, the left of the road is.
Does highway have to go over there and clean this up? I don't think it's a paved, I don't think it's a recognized road.
Really?
Yeah.
I mean, we may have an agreement with Brimfield too, that they do it. So, yeah, if you're looking, it's all these plot, these parcels, right? But that's all here. I don't know how you, one of these you can do layers and I don't remember which one.
Click on one, see who it comes up with.
Nothing. Oh, well, I mean, they have names, sorry. All these have names associated with them.
What is the name?
Well, they're all different, I don't know if I'm, Jeffrey Gagnon, Gagner, sorry?
These are, the properties should be owned by either Frank Silvano or Western View Hill Properties LLC.
No. This one.
Are you clicking on the right ones?
Yep.
I, I don't know, I'm looking at lots five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
But you gotta look at assessors map, twelve dash zero dash forty-five point five. Is it the other side of the road?
Those are all twenty fours though. Twelve, oh! Well, sorry, that's what it is. Twenty-four point five, four, three, two.
So it's everything to the right of that.
It is, that's very misleading.
Between the Pike and that.
Yeah, it's kind of misleading as to what it is.
That might be their lot numbers.
Yeah.
Their generated lot numbers, but they go on my map, assessors map.
Yeah, okay, so it is all this stuff here.
So how much land is that? Click on one.
These little guys, that being the biggest one. Oh, let's see, Frank Savino, yeah.
Yeah, that's him.
It is, three point four is that one, looks like probably the biggest one. So in total, it's what, fifteen? One, two, three, four, five, six. I think six. So it might be twenty acres?
And how much did they want for it?
I, I don't, I think they were owed somewhere in the north of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right next to the Pike?
Too noisy. You can't make a building be outside.
There's nothing, I don't think there's anything the town could do with that property.
I can't think of anything because it's so far away.
Yeah.
And sort of inaccessible because it's on the other side of the Pike.
Unless we get a tunnel over there.
Ah, there you go.
It's on the other side of the Pike, so it's not even.
Access is very difficult.
For us for access.
I can tell you something about that large section though. At one time, my grandfather had a ninety-acre lot, wood lot. And when the Pike went through, it cut off his wood lot. When he died, my aunt sold it to a tree company for logging. That was nineteen sixty-six. And I was mad at the time because she wouldn't sell it to me.
So I think we need to allow whatever transaction to go through, if they foreclose on it, they foreclose on it. And then they can come in front of the board. You know, see if we're gonna entertain, write a first refusal.
Yeah.
But if they foreclose on it, shouldn't be taken, it should automatically be taken out of chapter anyway, shouldn't it? Because it comes to a new owner.
Yeah, probably, more likely.
Because chapter land is chapered to the owner.
You can't transfer the chapter status?
I'm not sure. It would be a question for the assessors. It's about thirteen minutes from there to the center of town. Fourteen minutes.
Yeah.
It's a hike.
All right, well, moving on, right?
Moving on. Any more old business?
You mean correspondence?
Yeah, we're on correspondence.
Correspondence, sorry, I took off my glasses.
I received some correspondence from a lady that was interested in the Wrightsmill complex. And she wanted to meet with the selectmen at some point to, to discuss her, her options. For businesses she wants to bring into the town.
Door's open.
Yeah, cool.
Any more correspondence, we wanna move into comments and concerns. I don't have any comments or concerns, do you guys have any comments and concerns?
Uh, we had, we do have some.
Well, I'll just, I'll just say, it's kind of cool that, well, I mean, she passed away, but we had a resident who was a hundred and three.
Yeah.
That's kind of neat, right?
Yeah. We live in over here.
Wonder how many other people in.
Imagine the experiences in that life?
Yeah.
Now, all we got is Joe. We love him though.
So the board has no more comments or concerns?
No.
We open to the public? Is Joe?
Is this spam? I don't want to touch it. Don't, don't click on it.
No, no.
We got one.
Oh, this is a new one?
Okay, gentlemen. This is dealing with the Boston Post cane. At one time, there was one that came to this town. There's been no mention of it being awarded to anyone between nineteen forty and twenty twenty-three. So in August nineteen ninety, the Boston Post newspaper, in order to get more readers, gave away to seven hundred towns in New England, a walking stick cane. This cane was described as being a Gabon ebony walking stick with a gold cap. The engraving of the Boston Post cane for us would said, presented by the Boston Post to the oldest citizen of Warren, Mass. The Boston Post ended major production about fifty years ago. Among the other New England Warrens given the Boston cane, Warren May, Warren, New Hampshire, and Warren, Rhode Island. Board of Selectmen are the only body who can choose who will be awarded the Boston Post cane. Many of these have been lost over the years or never returned. A lot of the Boston Post canes given to the elderly, their relatives thought it as a gift and kept it. Over the last hundred years, as many as fifty elderly could have had the Boston Post cane. Westbrookfield still has theirs. Some towns have gone to a different award for the elderly, like a plaque or a certificate of being the oldest person in town. The requirements to be awarded the Boston Post cane are to have lived in the town for at least the last ten years. We can now use the town street census. To be over the age of ninety at the time of the award. To not be using a local street address while they're in a nursing home someplace else. Now, it needs to be understood by those who receive the real cane, that upon their death, the person who has received the Boston Post cane, that said cane will be returned by the next of kin to the Board of Selectmen soon after their death, so it can be awarded to the next in-line elderly person. I've listed the next two elderly.
Where's our cane?
If you have the cane, return it.
Yes, whoever has the cane.
There can really only be one person who has it, or a family, right? There was only one cane?
Yeah, there was only one cane issued to Warren.
So who was given it the last time?
I haven't found it in the records.
That's who we have to talk to.
Didn't they take a deposit, Joe?
Yeah, exactly, we need a credit card for that.
But, it would be nice if we could continue giving the award. I mean, I realize Mrs. Potasek at a hundred and three would have been probably given it.
Clear frontrunner.
Two years ago, she would have, she was the frontrunner. Now, there are only two, one of which David knows, do not shovel her driveway.
Do not miss her.
Shovel her driveway.
Yes.
Oh, she's covered road extensions.
Last time I stole over her driveway.
It would be nice if, you know, either a plaque or a citation from the Board of Selectmen to this elderly person. The two I got listed there would currently be the elderlyest.
Are we just gonna find it?
I, I, I went through the town census record.
So you're sure on these?
Oh, on those two, yes.
Cause if we did do an award and then somebody pops up and they're born in like nineteen twenty-three, we're gonna be in trouble.
If, first of all, you gotta be at least ninety, which limits it. Then you have to have lived in the town for ten years. You cannot be in a nursing home, say like Palmer or a Westbrookfield, and using this as a mailing address.
Right.
You have to physically be here.
Shoveling your own snow.
She'll beat you with the shovel.
She will, yeah. But anyways.
I mean, I've only known her for fifty-five years.
Super nice lady, very independent, and I, I strongly feel she'll live past a hundred and three easily, and then some. Cause she is probably one of the most fit people I know.
I, I think we can look into plates, meanwhile we get a cane.
Yeah.
Just to get the tradition going.
Yeah.
Oh, have we checked the library to see if it's at the library?
Yeah, it could have been like donated or something.
Yeah, it could have been returned to die, because I believe there's canes there. Cause they have weapons and canes and, you know, old muskets and stuff, so.
Sylvia might know.
Yeah.
They're about seventy to a hundred dollars each.
It, it would be nice if we could get this tradition back to going.
I will say we could start with plagues and just give the plate instead of have the cane and look for it and return.
That all gets it returned, yeah.
Just keep the plate.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns, Dan?
And Thibodeau, Bora Health, I just wanna make a comment for the senior center. The upgrades that are being done with the, particularly the dishwasher system. Before we invest any money into it, we need to make sure that the temperature, the final rinse temperature on that hits a hundred and eighty degrees for sanitizing purposes. So there's no problems with the.
Code violations?
Code violations, yeah.
It's a commercial dishwasher, obviously.
Yes, but it still needs to hit a hundred and eighty degrees for the final rinse to, to sterilize.
Yeah.
And how we do that? How can we test that?
You have to look at the manufacturer specifications for the product, it should be listed there.
I believe it does, I can double check it.
Yeah, I would just double check just to make sure, cause I'd hate to have that installed and then we have an issue.
There's actually, I think, a booster on the, on the. Well, it takes in hot water and then heats the hot water up more.
Right.
For higher temperature, but you gotta make sure, I would just check the manual and.
Yeah, I would just check it, just, just to make sure it's, it's there.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan.
Next meeting?
Hey, wait a minute.
Oh?
Oh, we have another. Come over.
I came out in the cold for this. I'm even gonna remember my name. Tim Barshin. So I re-watched the special meeting. And balance of power is what the people that were there voting, said they wanted to keep the balance of power. Do you guys remember that or?
Yep.
Okay, balance of power, it could mean a lot of things, but here's what I like to see. To maintain the balance of power. Now, is this the highest office in governing of the town?
In the town, yes.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, what's the next one up, AG? If you guys don't behave as a DAG or Attorney General?
It's the, uh, this, the citizens, the voters, like we, they could.
We're elected officials.
Recall election, if you don't like what we're doing, you can recall one or more of us.
Really? All right, anyway.
It's happened before, ten, fifteen years ago, there was a recall of selectmen.
There was a one more recent, but anyway. So what I'd like to see, uh, May is the election coming up? So we used to have contestant night, candidate night, not contestant. Could be a contestant, but anyway. We had it and we haven't had one in quite a while. So if there's two or more candidates, I'd like to see us have that, so. It would give, and I want, we had it before, but it was, there were people there, but you had that, there were submitted questions, which was kind of lame, I thought. So if we do have it and we can't have it, I'd like to have the audience be able to ask. So if we do have it and we can't have it, I like to have the audience be able to ask. Questions, you know, on the spot. And I think that would be. The best way for the public to pick. You know, have a better chance of picking the right candidate. Is that doable? Anybody know or?
It was, it was before, for example, many years ago, when I. Started as a planning board, I, I sat over there and other contestants sit over here. And the public was asking questions.
Right.
So it happened.
Yeah.
Um, one of the reasons why I stopped, well, one is the lack of candidates. Covid hit us as well, so that was another thing not to do it, but if we have candidates, we will have a candidate night, for sure.
We're gonna have, okay.
Yeah, but. Even if we have one. I think we should, we should have it.
Yeah, that's fine.
So people can know him.
Cause I don't know what's gonna happen in May, but the point I'm trying to make is, you know, we've had, uh. Not so good candidates, maybe, let's say that. In this way, the public can ask questions, not, not that it's some bended stuff, I don't know, some of those questions were, I don't know. I think they came from another town. But if the people in the room can ask, in that way, the people that are gonna run can also prepare themselves, you know, have a better chance of preparing themselves. I think that would keep the balance of power. Yes, no?
Yes, possibly, yeah.
Alright, so. Who handles that, the clerk or?
The candidates agree on it.
Yeah, but who puts it together?
To be arranged, uh, the candidates, it has to be separate because the boards can't take part in it.
So how about the moderator?
The moderator could set it up.
Yeah, there was a moderator, right.
Cause they're independent.
Yeah, but they had submitted questions in the past.
Typically, that's normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not good.
Well, because then you don't get into arguments with the public over the same subject asked in different ways.
Yeah, but we want to pick the right person. You know what I mean? So.
Well, that's where the candidate should be actually getting out and talking with you, and if you see somebody that's interested. You should sit down and talk with them, ask for time.
Right, but I'm talking during the, you know, candidate night or event, whatever you wanna call it, why can't we have, if we have twenty people in a room, why can't we have live questions? That makes more sense.
It would all be, it would depend on what those people agreed on, right? So, so the moderator.
People in the audience agree on that?
No, no, the moderator would say, you six candidates, we wanna have a candidate night, are you okay with? Questions from the audience, questions from, you know.
So the candidates choose?
Pretty much, cause otherwise they may say, no, I'm not gonna participate and there's not a lot.
Well, that's okay, then we don't need them.
Yeah, but, uh, you know.
No, I don't think that's fair though, honestly, I think the people in town. Should have the ability to, you know, question the candidates. Because how else do you know what you're gonna get? You might as well pick a name out of a hat, I mean, it's.
You know, one good thing with the submitted que, or the pre-done questions is you can ask the same person, you know, what's your goals, candidate day?
Yeah, yeah.
Goals candidate, where sometimes if you start asking audience members, you'll get all sorts of things, and then it's hard to compare. Cause maybe the incumbent gets picked on a lot and the new guys who are running don't get any questions at all.
Life isn't fair, but you know, we're gonna be stuck with somebody for what, three years or whatever it is, right?
Yeah, or five.
And we're dealing with a three to five year being stuck and it's horrible. I don't wanna see the town in the same position. So I don't know, I think it makes sense, if you're gonna have it, I mean, this may never even happen, but if you're gonna have it, I think that. People that are in the room should have questions that they can ask, and then maybe come back with a second question, depending on what the answer is.
Yeah.
No?
Good ideas.
Yeah, but can we did it?
Well, ultimately, it goes up to whoever's running.
The moderator?
Say, yeah, it's a great idea, I think it's great, but two other candidates say, no, I don't wanna do that.
Yeah, let's, for example, I'll say why, let's say I wanna rerun.
Yeah.
I can't decide, oh yeah, let's have a, you know. As a, as a selectman, I can't say and organize this because I'm gonna have a rerun. That's why we cannot say it, it has to be somebody else.
So let me give you a quick example, I know it's getting late. So let's say we have someone that's gonna run in May, right, presently. And I've seen in other towns where they put spoilers in. It happens in real politics as well. And that deprives the town.
Happens in small towns too.
I know it does, but that deprives the people in town of good quality people. And that's not right.
Probably a, a committee to, to get this organized.
Like a, a debate committee or something?
Yeah, it shouldn't, it shouldn't, it has nothing to do with us, so that would.
No, no.
That, that would have to be some independent board that wants to do that.
Moderator, I think is the best.
The moderator, yeah.
Um, what, what, what would a spoiler candidate, I mean, we have problems getting anybody to run, I can't imagine a spoiler candidate.
Well, we don't wanna get into the skeletons in the closet stuff, but.
I, I really like the idea, I'm, I'm just, I'm afraid that we're gonna ruin with an empty room.
No, I don't think so, no, you might be four or five people, that's, that's all we get anyway, so, well, I wish you guys would think about it, but I wanted to bring it up before May.
Yeah.
In case, you know, there's steps to take.
Tim, do you wanna run this?
No. I'm not smart enough.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
You're thinking.
I, I wanna preserve what we have. I mean, if anybody here disagrees with me, I mean, I'd be awfully surprised, I don't think it's ever been any better. And. I can't say too much about it, but I wanna preserve what we have and, you know, keep it going. Cause I think this formula works really well. And I hate to see it get, you know.
I, I, I have to say thank you very much for that, it's a big compliment.
I've said it all along, but.
The current selectmen that are here. Um, they have other things going on in life too, and.
I understand.
At some point, we gotta let other, other people take over and other people run for positions and.
This is not the time though. I mean, look at, you got all these opportunities coming and knocking on Warren's door, right? You got maybe the mill for like eight million, you got the guy who wants to build a racetrack for thirty million. And there's a whole lot more, the money's coming in, you just, you guys just announced that the percentages of people that were poor and. Went from fifty-six to thirty something percent, so the money's coming, this isn't time to, uh, you know.
Yeah, but that hurts us too.
Well.
Because now we went out eligible for grant, certain grants anymore because the town's making too much money.
Well, sometimes you gotta make sacrifices.
Yeah.
But the money's coming, and this ain't the time to bail out.
No.
So.
Tax rate's going down, people are getting a little better and.
Everything's good.
Doing better and.
I know you guys get knocked around, but honestly, if you compare it to other small towns, everything is good here.
It is, it is.
Right, but we wanna maintain that, you know, cause I think.
Well, that's where your vote counts, and if anybody runs for reelection, then that's when you need to vote, but we can't really comment on that because.
I understand.
We're already in a position and none of us are campaigning right now for anything. So we're not, this is not a campaign meeting.
We don't know what's gonna happen, I agree, but to keep it as, uh, uh, you know, fair play for everybody, including the residents. I would like to see, you know, maybe take a survey, I don't know, I would like to have it, so if we have a candidate night, if we have candidates. That we can ask live questions, I don't think it's asking too much, otherwise, like I said, you might as well just pick a name out of a hat, you know? Cause you don't know what you're gonna get. And it's not a guarantee either, if we have, cause we may not ask the right questions. But we wanna have it. Balance of power for both sides.
How we end up having the, the elections and the town meeting before and after this time? Is it before?
Yeah, you got like, if you're new, you get almost a month.
Yeah.
Before you have to, yeah, to catch up.
We push back the town meeting so they can, whoever gets elected gets sworn in, gets everything done, and then they have time. To actually see what's going on.
Yeah.
Before we have a.
Yeah.
A special, um, because before, your first, first meeting was generally the special.
Yeah.
It's like, here you go, read these articles, I'm like, I don't even know what these articles are.
Yeah.
What's an article?
Yeah.
Alright, well, anyway, that's what I'd like to just bring that up, and maybe if you guys can. Muzzle it around or something and then, um, before it gets too close to the elections, and again, I don't know if anyone's even gonna run, but.
Yeah.
Alright, that's it.
So I'll just say that Travis texted and said maybe the Quabog Civics teacher?
Joe?
I don't know the name, but maybe they could be part of the organization of it, or the running or something.
Mister Salvador.
Oh, is that the civics teacher?
Yeah, every time, every year they come with the kids and they give me a card, cause we give him a tour and everything, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, maybe he, he and the moderator could get together or something, I don't know, let's figure it out.
I think we're getting a little bit in the weeds here because we can't be talking about this stuff too much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your comment, anybody else? None? Next meeting will be. Next Thursday, sixteen. Town administrator is not gonna be here, he's on duty for another meeting. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DeFrenzo?
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.